I’m the president and I just welcome all of you here. And before we begin, I’d just like to acknowledge some of our panel members who are here, the superintendent of schools, Dr. David Lassier.
Right.
What’s Lucier?
Lucier, sorry David. And select board members, Marjorie Freeman, the chair, Tom Boofelder, Collette O’Frank, and Beth Sullivan-Woods, welcome. Welcome to everybody.
(audience clapping)
Kenny.
Sorry, Kenny, where are you? Sorry.
You weren’t on my list.
But you’re just as welcome. And our chair of the Board of Trustees, who is sitting, Alyssa is right here, Alyssa Povich. I think I’ve gotten everybody who needs to be recognized. Today, we’re going to speak about the project that you’ve been hearing about, give information, answer questions when we are able, because we don’t have all the answers yet. And we’ll have a microphone later, after we’ve presented, for people to speak. I think the ground rules, like the select board, three minutes per speaker. Please put your name on the list if you haven’t already, if you want to speak or ask a question. And we’ll hold tight to the three-minute limit, because that seemed to work pretty well at the select board when we were there a couple of weeks ago. So I’m just going to jump in and I’ll pass it on to my colleagues. Thank you. Here’s an agenda for our session. You can all read it. Let me speak a little bit, just for a moment, about Mass Bay, what it is. Because although we’re a community college housed in Wellesley, we are less known, perhaps, than we might be in the town of Wellesley, because not a lot of Wellesley residents make use of Mass Bay Community College. We are a community college for the Metro West region. We have about 6,000 students at any given time. We have this our main campus, but we also have a campus in Framingham, where we have our health science programs, early childhood and human services, and a campus in Ashland, where we have our automotive technology program. The college has been around since 1961, but it didn’t move to this, to the site until We’ve been in this building, we’ve adapted this building for our use, because it was really, as many of you know, it was a Catholic girls’ school previously, and it was adapted for our use in the 70s. One of the buildings that you may have seen if you came in through the north entrance is a small building that’s a, it’s our Center for Wellness and Recreation. It used to be, it used to house the automotive technology program years ago. It’s very small, and it has a half-basketball court and a very small crowded fitness center. It’s really inadequate for the needs of students in the 21st century, most of whom go to colleges where there are adequate recreation facilities. So when I came here in 2016, I thought, this, this needs to be replaced. And we’re sitting on a lot of acres here, and let’s see what we can do. But just at that same point, the town of Framingham at the time said, “We’re not renewing your lease in Framingham.” We’d been in a middle school, an abandoned middle school, for 30 years, and they said, “We’re not renewing the lease.” So I had to pivot away from the recreation center and focus on replacing the Framingham building, which we did. And we have a beautiful new building on the corner of Mount Wait and Franklin. If you are ever in Framingham, please stop in and see how beautiful it is, because it’s really an incredible building. Very, very proud of it. It was a $63 million building, and it’s serving students in the daytime, nighttime, on the weekends, et cetera. But now that that building is built and occupied, I moved back to the issues here in Wellesley. And the need for recreation facilities did not change. In fact, it’s greater, because our teams can no longer, our basketball team used to play in the old Framingham Middle School, but we lost that. So we have to send them to Mount Ida. We have to rent space there for practice and for games. And all of our other teams are playing outside of this building. We need to do better for our students. We owe them more. But in the meantime, one of our programs really grew to a point where we needed more space, and that was our cybersecurity education program. It happens that Mass Bay has the largest cybersecurity education, not the largest, the only associate degree in cybersecurity education in the Commonwealth. And at any one time, we have 100 students studying cybersecurity, which is not a bad thing, since we all need protection in cybersecurity. Also, our health science student numbers have grown enormously. And if you remember, I just mentioned that program is in Framingham, but at the time that we built that building, the state, we were not able to build a bio lab in that building, because the money ran out. So our students have to take bio, anatomy, and physiology here in Wellesley. But with that population growing, they need space. So my idea was, let’s put cybersecurity education and the health and fitness center together in a new building, and that will open up space, with cyber moving out, for the biology labs, if you see my domino approach. And we envisioned a building just sort of behind this window, that would be cybersecurity education, health and wellness center. But how to pay for it? And just about at the same time, the state made it known that they were looking at using public lands for housing. And they passed the Affordable Homes Act, which you’ll hear more about. So that’s the evolution of this project. This is a vision of what that new building might look like. If you’re standing by the flagpole, if you came in by the, we call it the front entrance, but it’s really like the south entrance, the building would sit, standing, facing the building to your right. We have a partial soccer field. We don’t have a full soccer field. We have a partial soccer field, and we’d like to build that out as well, to be regulation size. So it could be used by our soccer teams, but also by other local organizations that like to play soccer and want to rent the space. We’ve had a lot of inquiries about it, and we say, “Well, our soccer field is not This building and the soccer field, we hope, will be of service to the community. I mentioned renting out the soccer field, but also, we plan to put pickleball in the recreation center. That will be 12 months a year, so it’s indoors and people can use it, and when our students aren’t there, the town can use it. And we’d like, our cybersecurity program runs programs for many organizations, school districts, municipalities, not-for-profits, hospitals, to learn cybersecurity, which we can extend to residents as well. So that’s, those are our plans. And if you see in this image, the aerial view, if you can imagine Route 9 is at the top of the picture, we can’t see it, but, and Oakland is running diagonally down. We would put the cybersecurity education center where that blue indication is, and then the soccer field is below that. Across the street is the, what’s called 40 Oakland Street parcel. So I’ll stop there and turn it over to my colleague Matt from Housing and Livable Communities.
Great. Thank you, David. I’m Matt Martin. I’m a real estate redevelopment specialist here with Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. You may have known us, know us at our former name, Department of Housing and Community Development. And I’ll tell you a little more about our role in this process. We, in general, we support and promote housing across the state. We, you may have known us as our, in our roles previously, and continued in providing state public housing to folks. We invest in affordable housing, that’s new production housing, that’s mid-tier affordable housing. And we support housing in general, whether that’s planning and zoning assistance, whether that’s infrastructure grants, at all levels, from soup to nuts, from planning to zoning to implementation. And then in 2024, the Affordable Homes Act was passed, which greatly expanded our powers to get involved and kicked off a number of new initiatives. And one of those is the State Land for Homes Initiative, which is this initiative we’re talking about here today. And part of, part of that initiative involved a deeper dive into the housing crisis that we find ourselves in today. And through a number of, you know, over a year-long process and interviews across the state, hearing from constituents, legislators, and folks like yourselves, we became, it became clear that we needed to produce housing at a much faster clip than we had been producing it in years past. And so, in order to meet the goals that we’ve established, we need to build 222,000 housing units in the next 10 years by 2035. And so, part of that, you know, we’re attacking that from many different, at many different levels. You know, we’re, we’re looking at supporting housing in a variety of different ways. So our first study, which, which concludes, and you’re welcome to read it, you can find it online, is Home for Everyone, which lays out the groundwork to those studies and how we, you know, came up with those numbers. We’re also have engaged a number of other studies, such as the Unlocking Housing Production Study, that identified over 50 different reforms that could take place, from better state initiatives, quicker and simpler permitting and processing, environmental reviews, coordination across state departments, and building code reforms that would help move housing at a faster clip, to help keep up with the demands that we have, that is such an issue that we face today. And I’ll turn it over now to Abby.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening, everybody. I’m Abby Vladek. I’m acting deputy commissioner for real estate at DCAM. So what, what is a DCAM, as our commissioner likes to say? So DCAM does capital planning, design and construction, and real estate services on behalf of state agencies, including our community colleges and state universities. I won’t read the whole mission, but you can, you can see it up there. We have a role to play in addressing the, the housing crisis that Matt mentioned earlier. So what, what we’re here to talk about tonight is a disposition that, in concert with the college, we’re looking to pursue of the site across Oakland Street from us. And so the Affordable Homes Act spells out how DCAM is supposed to pursue projects like these. So the first, the first goal of that work is to just create a streamlined process that, that more quickly results in housing production. I think, you know, the 220,000 number underscores the magnitude of the crisis and the amount of catch-up, frankly, that, that we have to do across the state for so many, so many years of insufficient housing production across the state. Property that’s conveyed under the Affordable Homes Act must be conveyed with a housing restriction, so I know this is sometimes a concern that folks have, right? If the state sells it, what’s going to keep somebody from, you know, putting an Amazon warehouse on there or something? We are required by law to put a restriction in the deed. But that said, there are many different kinds of housing that can be built under the Affordable Homes Act. It can be rental or homeownership. It can be, it can be market rate. It can be, I know there’s an inclusionary zoning bylaw in Wellesley, and typically, we’ve, we’ve adopted those policies where they exist. So there’s a wide range of housing options that can be accommodated under the Affordable Homes Act. The greenhouse down there, oh, I’m still on that last slide. The greenhouse down there, so municipalities must permit housing on land that is sold subject to the Affordable Homes Act. That’s one of the requirements of the AHA. And that housing must be permitted at a density of no less than four units per acre. Finally, the brown or red house down there, municipalities still do have the right, the ability, under the Affordable Homes Act, to control five, five dimensions that you see there: height, bulk, setbacks, open space, and to conduct site plan review in communities that have site plan review as a, but, but again, they have to allow the housing by right. So it’s not a discretionary permitting process, but it is an opportunity to, to help shape the development. Next slide, please. For those of you who were at the select board meeting a few weeks ago, you heard our commissioner phrase this slide as, “We’re not just picking on Wellesley.” It’s true. This is a statewide housing crisis, and we are looking statewide for, for land that can be used to help address these needs. So just run through these quickly. We had a property conveyed in Munson, over 100 acres, over the summer, in Western Mass. We have properties under agreement in, in four cities that you see in the second bullet. A few weeks ago, we auctioned off five properties, in some in suburban Boston, some more towards central Mass, and we’re expecting to close on all of those in October. We have some large planning projects in Charlestown, elsewhere in Boston, in the town of Lancaster, in Concord, and we have RFPs out. Actually, we’re moving, we’re moving so fast, that third-to-last bullet is outdated. We no longer have an RFP open in Fitchburg. It closed earlier this week. And we’re, we’re continuing to look, and we will continue to add more properties to, to this pipeline. So to talk a little bit more about this site itself, so the site across the street is 45 acres, so folks are probably most familiar with the parking lot that’s on the front of it, but there is kind of a whole, a whole back piece to it, and, and I think all of that has been determined by the college to, to be surplus to their needs. So the current uses, you can see, there, there is a fair amount of parking that happens here, and we’re working with the college to understand what the replacement plan for that parking looks like, including for, for some school buses, that I know the school district parks there, and the pickleball courts, the president already, already discussed. We are in an outreach phase right now. We’re in a information gathering phase. We’re in a talking to neighbors phase. This started kind of informally over the summer. We didn’t want to hold public meetings over the summer and kind of risk missing people for vacation schedules, so that’s why we’re doing that now. But, but nonetheless, smaller conversations have been, have been going on for, for a while now. And, you know, we’ve heard concerns about affordability. We’ve heard concerns about traffic. We’ve heard concerns about how the undeveloped portion of the site interfaces with some of the recreation amenities that are, that are nearby. But, but we’re still, I think, very much, very much in the information gathering stage here. So with that said, I think we’re going to turn it over to you in just, in just a few minutes. As I said, we want to hear from folks. I, you know, I think people are often used to seeing a development proposal and being asked to react to it. We do not have a development proposal for you right now. We are gathering information that will then be used to help inform an RFP that we put out, to select a developer, who will then have a proposal that will then come before the town. So this is really, you know, this is really kind of ground-floor level information that, that we’re discussing at this time. And so I, I know that that can sometimes be confusing to folks, or like, where are the pretty pictures? Where’s the thing I’m supposed to be reacting to? And it really is much more open-ended than that at this point. That said, we really do want to have a development here, at, at the parking lot, that, that, at the parking lot site, that, that folks in town like and are proud of, and that integrates well into the community. And so, you know, folks may have seen on your way in, there were a bunch of boards set up, kind of out to the right here, with, you know, we’ve got the dots and the stickers and the post-its. And so if that’s, if that’s the way you’d like to engage, I’d invite you to go peruse those now, before, before the meeting ends and there’s kind of a stampede, or afterwards is fine as well. There was a sign-up sheet on the way in, both, there was one sign-up sheet for, to write down your email address if you want to stay involved, and then another sign-up sheet if you’d like to offer comments here tonight. See, raise your hand if you need one, one or either of those, and Maggie can, can help you with that. We are absolutely accepting feedback by email. We’re going to be back here again in two weeks, so tell, you know, tell your neighbors, tell your friends. Same, same format, so if you don’t want to sit through the repeat, you don’t have to. But, but we invite anybody who, who would like to offer comments to, to come to that one as well. And then we’ve got a digital survey as well, so you can point your QR, your phone at that QR code there. And again, if you’re, if you like to answer a survey, or if you’d rather submit written comments, please, please do so through, through the forums there. Good, I see some QR code takers. So I think that’s it for the, the us, us-speaking portion. As the president said, we, we invite comments. I think we’ll start with the folks who did sign up on their, on their way in or subsequently. We really do ask you to limit it to three minutes. We don’t want to cut people off, but we do want to provide ample opportunity to hear from everybody who’d like to speak tonight. We will answer questions where we can, but I think a lot of the questions that, you know, that folks may have, we’re taking notes and we’re going to come back, right? So factual questions, if we weren’t clear, if there are things that you need to better understand in order to provide us with your feedback, I think those are the kinds of questions that we’re, we’re happy to take. You know, bigger questions, we might write down and, and take back and take a little more time to think about. So again, we really want to hear from you. We really want to limit the amount of time that, that we’re speaking this evening. So with that, why don’t we start hearing from people?
We turn to Maggie for the first name.
Okay, great. First name on the list is John McDonald. And I’m going to read the first few names, because I know people might need to shuffle out of their seats, unless we’re passing the mic around. Pass the mic. All right. I’ll, I’ll come to you.
Good evening. My name is John McDonald, live on Standish Road.
If you’d like, you don’t have to.
Pardon me, John McDonald. My concern is environmental. I’m in the winter of my life. In other words, I’m older than Durick, because I have two things going for me: a beautiful wife and common sense. And my common sense is completely baffled by the destruction of the trees across the street. It was not long ago, academia was at the forefront of saving the forest, even tying themselves to trees, students, professors, teachers, to keep the developers knocking trees down. And here we are today, a college selling that forest land to a developer to tear them down. I don’t know if there’s an answer to that, probably not, but it’s a concern many of us have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Maggie, do you have the next name?
Next up is Doug.
Hi, Doug Youngen, from 162 Oakland Street. Just a little background, my wife Lynn and I have raised three kids. We lived on Hasty Street, right across from Fisk, and then we moved to Oakland about nine years ago. First of all, thank you, President Bodell, for sponsoring this, and Abigail and Matthew for hearing us out here. I’ve gotten myself up the curve a lot over the last week. I’m not one that gets involved in this side of the community, more on the, the school side, but I’m trying to understand it all, and I think I do now. So, President, I think I can speak for a lot of people that, that we’ve talked to, and Lynn’s, Lynn’s been out in the neighborhood passing out flyers, is the fact that the neighborhood loves Mass Bay. There’s no question without that. There’s been a fantastic relationship, and, and there’s not a lot of opposition that I’ve heard about expanding and doing the things you talked about. A lot of talk in the world now about cybersecurity, and more people getting associate degrees, and less people needing four-year degrees. So we’re a big, I think a lot of the community is supportive. The challenge is, is the quid pro quo with this, to have a piece of land. Unfortunately, I think you’ve picked a very, very poor piece of land. That this place has huge traffic issues already, and now you’re going to shove at least 180, maybe more, people there. And as somebody said earlier, before the meeting, there might be two people per house, so double the number of cars. That’s almost doubling, might even be doubling the neighborhood. So with that, I’d like to ask, President, if you’ve really thought about the impact, I’m sure you see the traffic yourself, the impact on the traffic and what you’ve done, and/or you’re going to do to mitigate that issue?
The traffic’s been brought up in the past as a concern. I know that there’ll be a traffic study done as this project progresses. One thing that I can say that may help a little bit, or somewhat, is that at Mass Bay, like in most colleges, our use of online courses has grown enormously since COVID. 14% of our courses were taught online before COVID. Now it’s 41%, which reduces the number of people coming to the campus. So it’s, it’s not going to balance it exactly, but it alleviates. Plus, more and more of our employees are working remotely some of the days of the week. So we don’t have, we’re not causing as much traffic as we were in the past, when we were all, when we didn’t have many online courses and everybody came to work. So between the study and that factor, those are some of the things that I can respond in terms of traffic. But I, I hear you.
Next up is Sheri Cassir. I’m sorry. Oh, good. Thank you.
Sheri Cassir, I live at 21 Squirrel Road, which is closer to Oakland than you might think. I think this project is a win-win-win. First of all, per the conversation we’ve had, we win by building more housing, which we desperately need. We have a homelessness problem in the used Commonwealth that is growing, and this problem isn’t what you might expect. Homeless people are not the people that you might imagine. They are working couples with children who can’t afford to live in a house in Massachusetts. So this is a win, more housing. Secondly, I think it’s a win for our forest, because I think the college will agree to protecting much of our cherished forest. Win number two. Win number three, support for these students. Temple Beth Elohim has gotten to know these students. These students don’t have one job. They have two jobs, and somehow manage to go to college at the same time. They deserve this facility, which is going to enhance all of our lives. This project, so far, without seeing the plans, win-win-win.
All right, next up is Larry Shin.
Appreciate, first of all, you holding the meeting tonight and letting us speak. I have about three hours of material to go through, but I’m going to shorten it to three minutes.
Please email it all.
My name is Larry Shin. I’m a resident of 36 Grantland Road, a director of butter to the college. I’ve been there 34 years. I’ve been practicing land use attorney for 40 years, 20 of them before Wellesley Town Boards and Committees, representing clients and housing developers. So I know the process that it takes to build housing. Many of those developers are affordable housing builders. Having said that, I believe that this proposal is completely inappropriate for the site. It would permanently and adversely affect not only the property values of those in the neighborhood, but also the use and enjoyment of the entire community of next-door Centennial Park, a cherished natural resource. I understand that the college and DCAM believe they’ve found, what I keep hearing, is a win-win solution on paper to their goals of financing this new building construction, and also creating housing. But in the neighborhood, this is not a paper issue. This is a real issue. We live here, we work here, we walk here, and we drive here every day. And we know the terrible traffic that exists during class arrival and dismissal time, particularly at dismissal time, the traffic will back up all the way from the college entrance to the Route 9 Oakland Street light, when class is dismissed, and that’s one of the most dangerous intersections in town. So I believe it would be a public safety disaster to add both the additional students that the building is proposing, as well as the cars for the 180 units. Next, housing advocates wrongly believe this is going to add significant affordable units. It will not. The 180 units will be presumably 20%, the town’s requirement, affordable, which I heard tonight you’ll agree to. So that would leave 144 unaffordable, high-end condominium units developed here, serving nobody except high-income people, and that’s like many of the recent projects in town. And that's like many of the recent projects in town, the same thing, prices range for the market rate units anywhere from a million and a half to $4 million. Not affordable. So my suggestion is to have a win-win situation, not a lose-lose situation, and that is properly apply your Affordable Housing Act to just the five-acre development parcel you've identified tonight. That would yield 20 units of buy-right housing, and if you then engage in the usual town development process, you can address neighbor concerns and town concerns. And I'm sure that the ultimate density could raise to something like maybe 30 units, which is exactly the average of many recent housing projects in town. And in fact, the town has recently gone from way below its 40B threshold to well above it because of those small, less dense projects. So that's what I hope and appreciate the time.
All right, next up, Megan McCoy.
Hello, everyone. We'll see how this goes. My name is Megan and this is Allison. And as others have sort of highlighted their expertise in this meeting and in other meetings, I don't really have much to add to that. What I have to offer is more of a personal perspective. Allison and I are in the land abutting Centennial Park every single day, including today in the rain. She did well. But we live across the street. So my primary concern with this development is the loss of open space. My secondary concerns have been echoed by others as well, traffic, overall thoughtful design, lack of affordable housing. I think that's a key word. We're talking a lot about housing, but I've heard no suggestion that this will actually be affordable. But again, my primary concern is the loss of open space. Now, I have lived in Wellesley for a couple of years now, and I moved here mostly because when I drove down Washington Street, the trees were taller than the buildings. And that felt different to me than some of the surrounding just-as-nice towns. And I later learned that part of this, I know, I know, you know the word trees too, part of this, I know, was due to early zoning laws in Wellesley that prioritized the trees and open spaces over other kinds of development. And so some of the trees that we get to rock around, you know, amongst are 100-plus years old. And I am grateful every time we're outside that someone back then had the forethought. I mean, I don't know what they were thinking exactly, but whatever they were, allowed us to walk amongst these trees that are taller than the buildings. So while I'm not against the development either on this property or across the street, I hope that we are as thoughtful as someone was 100 years ago. And I hope that that will include some open space so that we can still go there every day. And I just think that, right, the loss of such a unique property would be felt immensely now and 100 years from now. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, next up, Leslie Weiser.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to do the questions and answers. I have been living on Oakland Street for, since 1987. I have raised my family there. We're still on Oakland Street. And one of the most wonderful, golden, heavenly places on earth is Centennial Park. It's called Centennial Park because it's been here for over 100 years. It's historical. It's beautiful. It's open-spaced. There are red foxes. There are coyotes. There are deer, many, many, many breeds of birds and animals. There are wetlands. So the first thing I would like to ask is, is there going to be an environmental study? Because if this many people crowded to this small space, it is definitely going to have a tremendous effect on the environment, on the animals, and on the health and psychology of everybody that lives around this area and in Wellesley. That's my first question. I would like an environmental study and a psychological study because the park, the open spaces, as was just mentioned, is just heavenly. To destroy that would be horrible. Larry Shin mentioned that there was a site that you could build on that might not at least destroy that part of the park. Also, entrance into the park. If this is built around the parking lot, it would prevent entrance into the park. There are wetlands. There needs to be a wetland study as well. Traffic, so for 40 years, I've seen the traffic come and go. I cannot for the life of me imagine that I'd ever be able to get from my house to Route 9 in less than 20 minutes at this point, even if I go around the other way. This morning, I was stuck in traffic trying to get to Route 9. And lastly, for the last five years, I wanted to put this on, for the last five years, I go to the park with my dog twice a day, and I can't remember everybody's names. There's so many wonderful people that I meet, people that are important to me, to the community. And I've taken pictures of them because I cannot remember everybody's names. So I wanted to put it on here, but you will see if I just briefly go through this. I got, I'm out of time, but I have 400 people and 300 dogs and pictures here that I wanted to show. This would be lost.
All right, next up, Susan Freed.
Susan Freed, we live at 15 Standish Circle, so we're right off of Standish Road. First thing, I do want to just comment, a lot of people say that the neighborhood in Wellesley doesn't use the school, and I think the relationship is quite different. I can't tell you how many people I know who have kids who have taken school classes here, and I've taken a class here. So I just want to throw that out there, that there is more of a relationship than acknowledged. It's not just, okay. The other thing is the traffic, I think, is a huge, huge issue. We're luckily buffered because we're on the circle, but when I walk off Standish Road, people don't want to turn left on Route 9 from Oakland. So they're coming up Standish Road. And the neighborhood, which was charming, we've been here 18 years and moved in with a kindergartner, it was adorable to have Walk to School Day, but you can't walk to school when the weather isn't perfect through the woods, and you can't walk to school on the roads. So that's a town issue and not necessarily the school issue, but I think the school needs to acknowledge that that's the neighborhood that exists. And there's a lot of people, I mean, we've been here 18 years, I've seen lots of neighbors turnover. We came in with the little kids, ours are out of college now and grown. But it's, it's an issue. There's no sidewalks, and that's huge. And whatever building the school does, I think the intersection of Route 9 and Oakland should be addressed in that construction. I'm afraid that whatever building happens is going to become an afterthought with the traffic study. And at 7:30 in the morning, even when school is not in session, it can be hazardous to make a left on Route 9. So it's not just a school issue, it's just what's happened over time and development happens, and then we're all left with what's happened. And so that's, that's my comment about that. And then the question I do have is, can some of it be over 55 housing so you don't have the issue with the schools? Because Fisk and Schofield are the two schools in town that have not been redone, and if families move in, which is lovely, where, that's going to be a huge issue for the town.
So as, as I said earlier on the slide, yes, all kinds of housing are possible here. And so I would actually ask for folks who have particular populations or affordability or any of those other kinds of considerations in mind, we have a board, we have two boards on your way out that ask, ask you to just kind of put a dot on what, what values you would prioritize or what, excuse me, what values you would prioritize at this site. And if you don't see the one that you prioritize there, grab a Post-it and just write it down. Thank you for bringing that up.
Next up is Joe Burke.
Good evening. I wonder if you could bring the slide up that shows the layout of the properties? Is that possible?
I, somebody can, probably.
Mike can.
Oh, thanks, Mike.
Because I was at the select board meeting last week and I found out something, but I'm still trying to figure out, is it the intention to develop all of that area within the blue lines completely? In other words, to the extent there's forest there, will the forest be leveled? Is that all of that property planned to be developed?
So all of the property is in play as part of this. What the, what the appropriate development pattern is on the site is part of what we're here to discuss.
One of the win-wins that the woman spoke to earlier was her belief, she said, "I think that Mass Bay might very well consider preserving the forest." But the "I think they may" is hardly an assurance to someone like me whose major concern is open space. I don't live in this neighborhood. I live over on Glen Road, which is a heavily trafficked road, but I've learned to live with it. Oakland Street is not much worse, but it's heavy. If that housing is built for 180 units with however many people in it, it won't matter how many students are working remotely, how much faculty is working remotely, you're still going to add all of those people to what is now a very difficult situation. But I get back to Centennial Park and that area. It's an absolute jewel in this town. And to the extent that you eliminate open space, you never get it back. You change the entire character of the area. So I have concerns about traffic. I have concerns about the schools. That doesn't affect me directly. My kids are out of school, they're out of college. I don't live nearby, I'm not going to be that directly affected, but the, the open space concerns and the elimination of that is a very real concern for me.
Thank you. Next up, Michael Crathan.
Hi, Michael Crathan. I live nearby on Standish, sorry, Priscilla Circle. Been about a 10, 12-year resident of this area. A few things I just want to bring up. I'd like to just propose that we delink these critical aims of the increased housing and helping Mass Bay. You know, these are critical goals, but we're going to lose potentially all this open space, which I think we can all agree is critical. If we leave the open space, make some sort of land swap, then you're going to get a mega housing project right off of Oakland Street, which is going to, of course, we've talked about all the implications of housing, but it's going to be the scope of a project that fits off of Highway 95. That's like the equivalent-sized project, and that does not look like the appropriate size or scope project to fit in a neighborhood. And so I think that we should delink some of these critical aims because I think housing's very important. I have a small business and I hear all the time that my employees have housing affordability problems, and so I agree, this is an issue. But that doesn't mean we tear down a forest and/or put up an equivalent of a nines in the middle of a small neighborhood that doesn't have the capacity to handle that. So I think we could delink it. I'm wondering what mechanisms President Podell, there are to raise funds separately than this DCAM process? Because a year or two ago, the Health Science Center was built in Framingham without the DCAM funds. And so there must be a way to get funds that don't include tearing down a forest. And so I'm wondering, the state has, actually, I think the governor proposed a $2.5 billion investment in infrastructure, including community colleges. And so there's money that's going to come down the pike for this, and I think we all support it, and a lot of us pay taxes into that. But we don't want to see, you know, these things ruined in our town. And so I think we could have a smaller scope project, and then potentially the funds from the smaller project could be added to state funds that come from a different mechanism. And that could reduce the scope, it could keep the natural forest intact, and I think that could be, that's sounding more like a win-win to me than anything else. We talked about the impact on the school for Fisk, where my kids go, and it's already been affected tremendously with the nines, and having another equivalent nines is definitely going to be detrimental to the system, and it's going to put a lot of burden on the school I think I'm done, but I would like to hear what other mechanisms the college has to raise funds, including the, within the concept that it's already been done recently for other buildings within the community college.
Yeah. Let me correct something that you said, which you may have misunderstood. The building in Framingham was largely built with state funds. It was a $63 million project, 57 million of which was provided by the state, and the remainder we raised through a capital campaign. So it was the college's first capital campaign ever in its life, and we were delighted to have raised about $6 million. So it was primarily, 57 million were provided by the state. In the case of this building, which I'm speaking, the Cybersecurity Education, Health and Fitness, Health and Wellness Center, we estimate that to be a $75 million project. Whatever we do on 40 Oakland Street will not pay for all of it, it will pay for some of it. The rest we would be applying to the state, as we did for the Framingham Building, and we would do fundraising. So this, this project alone wouldn't fund the entire building. And we, we don't have any other sources of funding.
So just as a follow-up, if you're already going to need additional funds, why not shrink this down and get just the state funds to fill in the gap?
Well, because my students deserve both the Cybersecurity Center, more bio labs, and they deserve a Health and Fitness Center.
Yeah, we agree. That can get done with the state funds, just like you did for the Health Science Center.
Well, you're speaking for the state. I don't know if you have the authority to do that.
I don't know. What have you looked into? Is there other opportunities?
Every opportunity. Because...
Do you need to tell us more of that, other than this project? What else have you looked into?
Well, the state, we're a state agency. We are funded by the state, and the Bright Act that the governor is seeking to pass would provide, if it passes and if it's funded, would provide funding for community colleges, state universities, and UMass for decarbonization, for construction of new labs and new buildings, and for all the deferred maintenance that have happened over the many, many years when there haven't been any funds. So that has to be stretched a long way. And the state is also looking to, as Abby talked about, is looking to public lands to address the housing crisis.
All right, next up, Jim Roberti.
Thanks for letting me speak and getting this opportunity. I think I'm the first speaker here who is not somebody that lives in the neighborhood. I am from Wellesley. Will you stop heckling me? Thank you. So I'm, I'm an avowed housing advocate, always have been. I am, I live on Western Road myself, which as Shane has shown, it's a great amount of development already. I've been accepting and welcoming of all the development that's come to this town, both development that has added affordable housing, but I've been following the governor also. She's not just trying to build affordable housing, she's trying to build housing in general. We've seen from your slides that there have been many, many other towns that seem to have responded and actually gone forward. But what we've had a hard time here in Wellesley over the last couple of years, which has sort of been sad to me, is that wherever we try to do affordable housing, it's never quite the right spot. It's always, you know, we love affordable housing, but it really should be someplace else, like in Newton or in Brooklyn. So I'm always, and I'll finish up, I have, I've always been a fan of Roger Fisher and Bill Yurey's book called, it's a Harvard Law School book that they use on negotiation, which is called Getting to Yes. And the idea of what I think Sherri's pulling the essence out is, coming up with a win-win-win is not some sarcastic thing to be derided, it's actually something to be applauded, where everybody gives in a little to get to a goal. So the college needs some money for the, for the center, the kids need the center and the exercising. The state not only needs affordable housing, it needs housing in general because the concern if people read the Globe every day like I do, is the governor's worried that there's not going to be any place for people to live that graduate from the colleges, and this is going to become the next... is going to become the next wasteland of, because people are just going to move elsewhere because of the high prices. And then, I think the green people, and I, see, this is where I have a problem. Are the green people in the totality of Wellesley here, or is it just the neighbors? Which is a key distinction I think we need to flesh out. Because if you're a green person, lives on Western Road, you would be thrilled, I would think, if the state would preserve the, let's say, 40 acres and build 180 units on the five acres in a high-density kind of way, which you see as being done in Natick, it's being done in Newton, it's being done in Needham. But we have a real, I don't know why we have such a struggle here, because as the, as the teacher at Wellesley High School said so many years ago, "You're not that special." Okay? So, that's what I have to say, is I'd like people to try to work together, not clap or deride other people when they're speaking, try to be positive, try to be outgoing, shaking people's hands. You know, the last thing I say is, we can disagree without being disagreeable. Thank you.
All right, up next is Laura Robert.
Oh, hi, I'm, thank you for having us. I'm Laura Robert. I do not live here, I live in Precinct D, but a strong advocate for all the natural resources here. So, I do want to say that there are some things that are really special about Wellesley, and that is the three green areas. If you look at the map arially, there's three sort of green spaces in Wellesley. And so, I, you know, I know the previous speaker said you're not special, but there are some special gems in Wellesley, and we want to, we want to keep them. So, I want to see the vision of the college materialize, of course, but hoping for a kinder, or I don't mean to say it's unkind, but a gentler way of doing it. I'm an advocate for natural resources that you really are sitting in the middle of. So, it's not just what you're going to do there and what you're going to do across the street and what happens to the forest. It's sort of this, this big, bigger area. So, it's a large, unique, and it contributes to the town, the whole town. So, again, Jim mentioned how people in one part of town feel about something. But I think that big lands like this with a lot of natural resources really do impact everybody in the town. So, I think if you were to build out there, and you'd be taking down trees and all of that sort of thing, people would be wondering how we can sustain it. But what is planned for across the street is just very, very, very large and could really have an impact on the whole ecosystem here. So, my whole point is that I don't think what's being proposed is what the governor actually wants. There's something that she also wants, and that's to address the biodiversity crisis. And there's not enough time to go into it here, but if you look at a map of Wellesley, this, what you're sitting in the middle of is probably the best asset Wellesley has to maintain biodiversity and conserve biodiversity in the town. So, she wants housing, but she also wants biodiversity conserved, and we have a problem here, because the project involves both. So, I wondered if you're bringing in someone from the Energy Environmental Affairs on this? I know we've had a lot of representatives from DCAM, but I really feel like I'm confused about those two crises. So, to me, it's not about saving the 40-acre forest, it's sort of the integrity of the whole system of living things for the town's health and well-being and their quality of life. So, I just want to look at it from 50,000 feet. I hope you'll think about that Executive Order 618 and how it works with what you're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Matthew Middleton. Matthew Middleton? Okay, I'll move on to the next name. Amy Benjamin.
Hi, thank you so much for being here, for holding this and future meetings. I guess to, for, I have to say at this point, I am, I'm, I'm not clear on how I feel about this project. I have concerns, I share a lot of the concerns, I really appreciate Laura's remarks. I want to say that I also feel as, I'm not just part of the Wellesley community, but I am part of the Mass Bay community. I'm one of those, we are one of those proud Wellesley families who have a graduate from Mass Bay, and we appreciate Mass Bay and, and your love for your students and the diversity of students that it serves, I think, is a public good that should earn a level of goodwill and care in our deliberations. And so, I want to say that's part of what I come to. You are also my community, as well as Wellesley being my community. I do have a question. I'm not really clear on how, so, I'm just not clear on what is left of Centennial, or how much is actually Centennial. You know, I feel like I need a wider, I would need a wider map, I would like to see what other considerations there are. Having 45 acres doesn't mean that all must be used, of course, but I just want to say, I'm not a housing advocate, but even I know that building housing is not just a matter of building affordable housing here. It's about building the cascade of volume of housing that releases pressure so that all along the way, this horrendous housing crisis that just causes so much grief and dislocation and suffering is, is relieved, and that we just have a part of it. We just have a part of it, and I would like to, I would like to come to this, I would like to share those goals. I actually love the linking of good goals, understanding that there are losses and everything, and that's what being in dialogue is about. But I appreciate the linking of all of these good goals, including the good concerns that are being shared tonight, and I trust that continued dialogue. I, I, I hope and believe will bring us to something that's good for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, Jonathan Martin.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the meeting tonight. My wife and my kids and I live at 23 Standish, literally right at the bottom of the hill down here. We built a home there in 2008 and went through the whole town process, design, wetlands, all that, and there's a lot of wetlands right at the bottom of the hill here. So, one of my questions, concerns is, what really are we dealing with in terms of this building? How far are we encroaching into the forest behind us? Because it drops significantly all the way down, and that, you know, the soccer field, you want to make into a larger field, it drops off, and then where does the parking that's going to be lost across the street, where does that go? So, there's a lot of impact for all of the homeowners on 23 Standish, oh, sorry, on Standish Road and on Putney. You're on a fact-finding mission, as we all are here tonight as well. I know what the process was like to build one house down at the bottom of the hill. So, from a timing perspective, you mentioned earlier, the RFP process has sped up and gone very quick on some other towns. In your world, what's the perfect timeline for this whole project? And is finishing across the street first to enable this building to take place, is that how it phases? But I think more importantly is, how quickly do you want to get to the sale of that property across the street to enable the construction to happen?
In terms of, in terms of sequencing, I think the, we're in a position to move the housing site before, I think the college is going to be in a position to advance the Cyber Security and Health and Wellness Building. The question of an ideal timeline is one that I don't have an answer for tonight. I've said, you know, we are mandated to act with urgency, that's, that meets the, that the moment of the crisis that we're in, but I, I don't have more specifics than that this evening.
So, does the town of Wellesley, our voted officials, have an input into the RFP process to allow that to be kind of the roadmap that can be used for that development? Or is that the state-mandated RFP, that this is what it is, and you can kind of do whatever you want?
That's why we're here tonight, right? Is because we do want the RFP absolutely to be influenced by what, by what the town wants to see.
Okay. And the last piece is, and it's like a stuck record, if anyone knows what a record is. The traffic is brutal. Standish Road is like a racetrack right now. It isn't wide enough for sidewalks. We've raised three kids on the estate. The traffic lights on Oakland were out last week, and traffic was all the way back to Centennial Park, and we had people racing up that road. The traffic study and how it's going to be managed is absolutely critical. And just to be clear, 180 units is the minimum, right? That number came from 45 acres multiplied by four. So, we could be talking about 300, 400, we don't know what that number is. So, the infrastructure, the roads here aren't built for that volume, so we've got to figure that out.
Can I just address your question about whatever we build here and the soccer field? There's, we had an architect look at the land, and this was in 2016, before we got redirected to Framingham, to look at different places where this facility could go. And you may not know it or conceive it, but there's a flat surface. Yeah. So, that's sort of the intention of where this building would go primarily. Oh, so, sorry. So, sorry.
Can I go on the north side where the correct center is now? Can I not go on that piece?
It's conceivable, because we did this study in 2016, and, you know, things could change in those years. And we hadn't been planning for the cybersecurity portion at that time. But I don't want to say that it would, I'm just saying that it's a possibility. With regard to the soccer field, we also looked at how it would extend, and it would be in that area that you described where it cuts down very quickly. But there's a lot of land between that and the street, a lot, because by the time you get to that point, there's, there's a great distance.
In the wintertime, when there's no leaves, and you're, you have floodlights for the soccer field, you have light pollution for all the neighbors. So, I just, there's a lot of work that needs to go into this.
We've looked at that, too. And we have, there are ways with lighting now, if you get the modern, nice ones, that it doesn't, it interferes less. But we have a lot of time to work on that. We're not there yet.
Okay, up next is Matt Murphy.
Thanks for hearing from us. I have a question, but I'll give a little bit of context before the question. I live on Oakland Street, I'm in the process of raising three boys there, I've been there for 14 years. I've run through and biked through and spent so much time in that 45-acre parcel. I didn't know until today that that was owned by the state and Mass Bay. So, thank you, I guess, for letting us spend all the time there that we have spent there up until now. That parcel is a treasure. It's very, very unique, and I think it contributes to the town in ways that are hard to quantify. And as I'm sitting here, and I read the proposal today in preparation for coming here, you know, I keep reminding myself that the core of this problem is to build a building on this site. And the reason why we're talking about 45 acres is to fund that building on this site. It's like, these two things are being presented as one thing, but it seems like Mass Bay wants to build this building, and that brings in DCAM, which has its whole other several levels of regulatory machinery behind it and goals behind it and mission behind it. And it seems like, you know, just looking at the slide there, the very ambitious goal of what needs to be built in 10 years doesn't seem like people will be throttled when they decide how to use 45 acres. Sure seems like when you look at the number, the goal numbers, it would be unusual to expect that less land will be used. So, I guess that my, my question is, like, where are, where are the two organizations in this process? There are a lot of people in this room who are learning about this rapidly, probably, just like me. Is it possible still, from a legal standpoint and a contractual standpoint, is there any hope of decoupling DCAM from this, from the goals that Mass Bay has of building a building and a better soccer field? Are we past that point? Or could people in this room get together with the town of Wellesley and possibly figure out how to come up with money to build, or help build a building, or maybe get funding, or grants, or things like that? Are we past the point of doing that without DCAM, is my question?
When you say without DCAM, you mean without disposing of the land, or without building the cybersecurity building?
No, I think my, I hear about the cybersecurity building, and I think that's, sounds great. In my opinion, Mass Bay has been a great number. I feel like you deserve to have a new building and a better soccer field. But if, it seems like developing 45 acres is one path to get that money. And DCAM brings an enormous amount of layers and regulatory machinery and goals behind it that aren't, maybe not in line with many people in this room. Is Mass Bay still in the, in the phase of their thinking about this, from a contractual and legal standpoint, regulatory standpoint? Could Mass Bay and the people in this room and people in Wellesley and the town of Wellesley get together and start to think creatively about a different way to help Mass Bay build this building and fund it without DCAM being involved?
You know, if, if there were another way, I, if there is another way, I don't know what it is, because this is probably at least a $75 million building. And I don't know that the town or the president of the town could raise that kind of money. I have no idea. I kind of doubt it, for a building that would not be serving the town directly. We are a state agency, Mass Bay, we are part of the state, and we work cooperatively with the state in its goals. And one of its goals is, as we've talked about, to increase housing in the state. So, our need and the state's need kind of dovetail. We haven't signed any contract.
All right, up next is Andrea Danenberg.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Danenberg. I am a member of the Board of Directors and Secretary of the Wellesley Conservation Land Trust. Our organization recognizes the need to develop housing in our community. In fact, we have partnered with building a better Wellesley and sustainable Wellesley on prior housing-focused work. There is, however, competing interest. This parcel includes 40 acres of woodland. Protecting this land is essential to maintaining a healthy and sustainable natural environment. These lands are critical habitat for wildlife and plants, and include beloved trails used by many town residents, who would be shocked to learn these lands are not protected and not part of the neighboring Centennial Park. If developed, the damage would be permanent and irreversible. The educational and housing needs must be balanced with ecological, environmental, and climate change priorities. Accordingly, we urge DCAM and Mass Bay to protect these 40 acres of undisturbed wilderness in perpetuity. WCLT is eager to partner with the town, the college, and the state to make this happen. Thank you.
All right, up next is Dan Murphy. Anyone wants to add their name?
Thank you. No relation to Matt, although I know he's around the corner. So, before I'm accused of nimbyism, I do live on Standish Road and have since 1983. So, before I'm accused of NIMBY-ism, I do live on Standish Road and have since 1983. But I think I have a real problem as this is unfolding with the process in general. And one of the things I guess I could say is that I think that you should get an incomplete on this project. Because if I look at, what is the total acreage that's available from the college? And to Matt's point, is it in fact even feasible to build that building because of what's going to happen on the neighborhood below? So, I get that, you know, it's a potential component of the sourcing. But even as you said, Dr. Pardell, we don't even know if that building is going to be $75 million or if it's going to be $125 million. And what's going to happen with a non-permeable service when you, surface when you have to replace the parking lot? That's all going to run down the hill. Is there other land on the east side of Oakland Street that's part of the college campus that maybe you could parcel that off? So that you wouldn't need to sell all of it? Maybe you sell 20 acres that's around the parking area? So, there wasn't like, you know, you said you looked at that. I guess I'd like to see what all those different alternatives were that you looked at to understand with the cost of the building while still having the ability to satisfy the asset that you have to satisfy the housing requirements of the state. So, the state can come in and big time it, but I just don't think we have all the aspects that have went into this decision. And this is the final answer. So, we don't know whether there are other questions raised and what the facts were that went into that decision. That's really kind of all I had to say. So, thank you.
It's helpful. Because I'll just respond by saying, we don't have the final answer. We're still working out the final answer. This is a tentative plan that could be subject to all the things that you raised and all the possibilities you raised.
Understood, but it's been presented, this is the proposal.
Right. It's a proposal.
This is the one proposal. I wanted to, my point was, were there other factors in other Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, Plan D? And what are the ramifications and implications of those alternatives? That's all I wanted.
Next up, Samantha Johnson.
Hi. My name's Samantha Johnson. I live at 150 Oakland Street. I've got three little kids, or a handful of us at the back of the room who have little kids. And I feel like we have not really been represented yet, and there's a reason for that. We have to juggle a lot of schedules. So, if you look around the room, I would love if you all would consider doing one of these outreach events at FISC, which is the school that all the children that would be affected attend. I realize that's asking you to come off campus, but if you'd consider adding another one of these meetings and widely publicizing it to parents in the community, I think you'd get four times as many people in the room. So, that's my ask tonight. I think there's a lot of us that would have liked to have been here, but we, you know, are juggling spouses and schedules and, so we can't, you know, unless you wanted like that one mom who brought the baby on her back. So, that's, I think, would be, just go a long way.
Thank you. All right. Up next, Alex. Forgive me, I can't read this. Oh, there you are. Thank you.
Hi. Thanks, everyone. So, first of all, so I applaud the mission of expanding the Cybersecurity Center on campus, so because there are growing needs, so the community college is on the right mission. Students need facilities, so don't need to be needs for retraining and so on, that kind of a thing. The interesting thing is that the discussion started with building multifamily units, not just multifamily, but lots of, lucky luxury units, so for the land to get a good price, in some sense. So, I'm just wondering where that's coming from necessarily? And so, I have multiple concerns, but one here is that if you look at all kinds of housing types, even if you look at regular rentals, apartments, so the tenure residence there is higher than at luxury condos, which this will have to be. At luxury condos, residents tend to go in and out after a year, after two years. It's very low tenure. It's a lot of churn on the community, a lot of churn on the schools. So, a lot of instability in the community that's used to that. And then, the part is that, so it's going to be placed there, as the parking lot is going to be moved someplace else. So, and because the community college is on top of the hill, if it's a flat parking structure, so rainfall is going to come down and cause erosion down, which is not good for the remaining trees, for everything else. There are better options. We could build a parking lot to the north of the campus. It will make it easier for students to exit. It will reduce load in Oakland, not load, but traffic in Oakland. It will make things easier. So, I just would like, just you and others to consider other options. So, I value the land here. We can preserve it. We can maybe build a higher, a multi-level overground parking structure, which is cheaper than underground. There are multiple things that we can do to make it workable. When it comes to the type of housing we choose to build, maybe it's something that's kind of, you know, a bit easier on the community. It'll be kind of easier on the school, and FISC in particular. There'll be fewer integration challenges if people stay here longer. Just luxury condos and this kind of area where you have lots of closed unit families, at least in my view, not families, but closed unit community, doesn't go very well. So, I just, so I'd like us to consider different options. It would be good to preserve a large part of the Centennial Reservation, a lot of the wooded area elsewhere, as a kind of, to the east of the campus. So, we kind of, we need to look at different options and see kind of what works well for the community, that kind of a thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Odessa Sanchez.
Thank you. So, I wanted to say thank you again for making this presentation. Odessa Sanchez, I live at, on Barton Road in Wellesley. Seventeen-year resident here in Wellesley. And also, about 12 years ago, I attended MasBay. And I was a student here. I also joined the track team here. I know that we had a very competitive basketball team that was here. And you, and I've worked out in the Recreation Center. And I focused on what it was, not about what it wasn't. And it was a very intimate space. You could literally see your classmates working out. The half soccer field was where the track team would run and exercise. And it was a really good community where you could pass by and see people that you were learning with and working out with and were sharing the same goals. And I have seen the new building in Framingham, and, you know, it's beautiful, $50 million. But we have to admit that the area where it's been placed is a far cry from the area here in Wellesley. Perhaps that building and that size type of structure works for that community where you place the Framingham building, but it might not be the same type of layout here. I see what the current usage is for that space. So, where would the MasBay student parking now be? We attended this meeting, and the flat area right by the flagpole is pretty much for a couple of visitor spots, and then the rest of it's for faculty and staff, and then students, I was one, we have defined parking either down the side or across the street. WPS is using it for the buses. They don't just use it for the buses. That's also where the bus drivers congregate and where there has a trailer there. Where would that parking and where would that resting space be now for them? And I do believe in the Rec Center and having the 12-month-long pickleball courts. But also, what else would that building be useful for? We have teams and we have groups that could use dance studio space. We have senior citizens who like, who want to work out and have like a place where they could have morning workout groups. So, would that building be fully used, have more uses so the town could actually take more opportunities to utilize that? And then they would have a stake in helping you build that center. I just believe that we have to recognize, yes, there is a housing crisis. But again, what, Abigail and Matthew, is results to you? On the, one of the slides said that you want results. What equals results to you? Not just building it? Because if it's just building it, is your, is it a success for you? That's not what this community is looking for. Even our housing advocates, they're looking to house people that are in need and affordably. So, would that be a result for you or is just the result to just build?
Should I? Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, sure. Happy to answer that. So, as we've said, you know, we want to, we, the goal of the state land for housing program is to utilize state land to help meet the housing crisis. So, from our perspective, that's a key component of an outcome that we need, that we need and that we want to see on these sites all across the state. And as I said earlier, doing so expeditiously, I think, is certainly part of that mandate. As far as what does, what does it look like? Who does it serve? What values does it espouse? Those are all things that we're looking to define together, together with the town. So, we don't come in with preconceived notions that it has to serve this population, or it has to be rental, or it has to be ownership. That's exactly the kind of, that, what does success look like for Wellesley is exactly the kind of information that we're here to gather tonight. And not to be a broken record, I did have those growing up, too. We have some kind of directed questions to help try to elicit some of that information at the boards that you all will see on your way out.
And just to follow up on your question about the Health and Wellness Center, that when it's not in use by MasBay students, we'd love to make it available to neighbors and residents of Wellesley. So, it could be used by senior citizens or others when our students aren't using it.
And where do the buses not go?
That's a question that I know the answer to. We've housed the buses for a decade or two decades for free. We would have to find a new solution.
So, the need is?
Well, you know, we did it as a good neighbor, but our students have needs, too. And I don't mean to diminish the need for buses, but if we put our heads together, I'm sure we can find another solution.
Next up is Michael Donovan. Great. And I'm just going to note that we're getting close to our end time here with five minutes left. I got three names, including Michael, on the list. So, we're going to take those three and then probably...
Hi. Good evening. I'll be quick, since times of the essence. I'm a 34-year resident at Madison Road. I guess I have two questions, I think, and the last couple of speakers, I think, have really touched upon it. Since you're going to be building on that lot and you're going to be displacing parking, I think that in any traffic study and every parking study that you're going to do, presumably, you're going to include where all those parking spots are going to go. And as a part of a traffic study, I assume that you're going to do level of service, time and motion studies, and other technical analyses to make sure that the neighborhood fully understands the impact of your project. And I'm seeing people shake their heads, so I assume that you're going to have competent counsel on that in terms of handling that study. The second question I guess I have is deeper. In some ways, it's less project-specific, which is, is that there's a butter. Sisters of charity that has also sought to change their zoning and perhaps monetize that asset. So, the question I guess I have is, is that for good planning, since we don't, none of us, I think, in this room want to do one-off zoning so that we just plunk a building in, and we, and MasBay and the Commonwealth and their infinite wisdom basically gets that, gets the funds to produce this building. And then, we're left with, you know, a bunch of ramifications that the neighborhood has to deal with for decades and decades. Then an adjacent parcel, which could, probably highest and best use would be residential. It could be anything. It could be an insurance building for all we know, but it's probably going to be residential if in fact they do monetize it. Is that going to be included as a part of the study as well? Are you going to have holistic planning for the area and not just focus on a one project, you know, one and done kind of situation? Thank you.
Yeah, those are great suggestions. I don't have an answer for that now, but I appreciate the suggestion. Thank you.
Next up, Erin Bryan.
Thank you. I'm Erin Bryan. I live at 52 Werland Road. So, I'm one of the roads that kind of dead ends up into the park. So, I guess, I have a couple of different questions. They're all over the place. But the first one would be, as you're doing the traffic assessment, are you going to be looking at, if you're building into the parkland, there are a couple of roads that all dead end up into the park. Are those going to be now extended out into the park for parking and drive-through into whatever development gets done? So, I just don't know if that's going to get wrapped into the traffic study, but maybe. Another question was, when you put up the slide about how there are sort of five areas that the town is allowed to provide input on, it said guidelines to be determined. Any idea when those guidelines will be determined? You know, it makes it a little difficult to know sort of where we actually have input here. And then, obviously, you have a laundry list of sites that are in progress. Have any of those reached completion at this point so we can kind of get a sense as to what is actually happening on these sites? Are people using the full 100 acres on one of the ones that you identified in Western Mass? Or are they only building on 20 acres and preserving the rest? Just so we have some idea. And then, the third point is, again, I am also a mother of two young children. I'm at FISC. I've been involved with the PTO there for the last four years. When the nines went in, they definitely underestimated how many students would be moving into Wellesley Public School. FISC took a large number of those, all the elementary age students. We sort of exceeded our capacity that year. We lost two of our classrooms, our specialized rooms, so that we can make room for all those students, which was awesome. It was a great community. Then we redistricted. We lost a bunch of students over to Honeywell after those schools were completed. But if we're now bringing in another big influx of students, I just want to make sure that there really is going to be an assessment about, you know, to the point earlier, is it going to be 55 and older and we don't have to worry about students coming into the school or sort of what the level there is? So, I do think that another night like this would be helpful. I believe tonight is the middle school back-to-school night. I believe the next scheduled meeting is the high school back-to-school night. So, conveniently, there's a good number of Wellesley public parents who maybe aren't attending these. So, it might be helpful to do another one. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will say, we are, at HLC, we are in the process of writing the regulations, which will offer much more specificity about those things that the town can control and should be out by the end of the year.
All right. Raina.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Raina McManus, Mulholland Lane. I am an unapologetic tree hugger. I'm also a resident who is a supporter of the college. Thanks for providing this opportunity tonight for us to speak to you. Wellesley has precious little open spaces compared to neighboring towns and even less than people realize, as the gentleman over there found out just today. You asked, what do we want? For me, it's leave the forest alone. And if still needing to build on the parking lot, because all other funding mechanisms have been exhausted, then dramatically, dramatically reduce the density on the parking lot to protect both the neighborhood and the forest. So, those are my requests for tonight, and thank you for listening to us, and we look forward to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for attending today. It's all been very helpful. We don't have full agreement, but we have a lot of information to go on, a lot of questions that will make us stop and think. I hope you will stop by the boards that Abby described earlier. We meet again on October 8th. You're welcome to come, but it's sort of the same show. But as you see, as you choose. And I hope you have the sense that this is very much in flux and in planning. It's not set. It's not decided. So, your input is very much valued. So, thank you again for coming.
Thank you.